Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Mr. Santos and members of the audience. It is 5:00 PM and welcome to this evening's DEIC meeting. I am Angelica Sanchez, Director of Career and Technical Education and I'm also the DEIC Chairperson. Before we begin with today's public hearing, I would like to approve the November minutes that were emailed to the DEIC voting members. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for November? Mr. David Perez. Do I have a second? Ms. Miller. All in favor? Please raise your hands. Motion passes. Today's item for this evening is the public hearing on the presentation of the district's annual report describing the educational and financial performance of the district. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, I will return to the podium to adjourn the DEIC meeting.
Thank you ma'am. Good evening, everyone. A public hearing meeting of the Board of Trustees of the United ISD is being held today, Wednesday, January 23rd, 2019, beginning at 5:00 PM. And the United ISD is stood in activity complex, fine arts building, the Rio Texas. Subjects to be discussed or considered or upon which any formal action may be taken our as listed below. Adders don't have to be taken in the order shown on this meeting's notice. Number one, open hearing. Number two, Texas Educational Code 39.306 and 39.362, presentation of United ISD Annual Report, including the TAAPR, Texas Academic Performance Report and PEIMs Financial Standard Report, describing the district's education and financial performance. Public comments. Melissa?
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Mr. Santos, audience. For the record, my name is Emma Lesa. I'm the Executive Director for Instructional Accountability and this evening we bring to you United ISD's 2017-18 Annual Report. There are seven sections to the annual report. The first one and encompasses the most of the report is the Texas Academic Performance Report, followed by the District Accreditation Status, Campus Performance Objectives, PMS Financial Standard Report, Report on Violent or Criminal Incidents on Campuses, Student Performance in Post-Secondary Institutions, and finally, the glossary for the TAPAR. The TAPAR, the Texas Academic Performance Report, is compiled by TEA for every district and campus using information from the Public Education Information System and then, and also the student assessment data. New for this year is they're publishing two different formats. One is an online format, which is comprehensive and dynamic, meaning that they can add additional data as becomes available, and a scaled back PDF version, which is the one that we're going to review this evening. Starting with the academic performance, we begin with the cover page to our TAPAR report. And on our cover page, you, we very distinctly see that we did earn a rating of an A for the 2018 Accountability Year, and also our district earned the only distinction available to districts, which is the post-secondary readiness distinction. Under Special Education Determination Status, we meet the requirements for this indicator. And also new this year, the 2018 Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery or ASVAP test, we meet the requirements. I'd like to go over our demographic data first, which we've also obtained from our TAPAR report. The state educates five, over 5 million students, the region over 430,000 students, and in UISD, we educate over 43,000 students. Important to note, the Hispanic rate at the state is 52.4%, while at our district, it's 98.8%. When we look at the economically disadvantaged percent of students that we educate, we are at a 75.4% and the state is at 58.8%. English language learners, we are at a 36.1%, very comparable to the region, and the state is at 18.8%. When we look at the students that qualify or meet the criteria for at-risk, we are at a 59.3%, almost nine percent points higher than the state. This is our district report, which can be found on the TexasSchools.org website. And clearly here we see again that we've earned our A, scoring 92 out of the possible 100 points. It's broken down into three areas or domains. The student achievement domain, which we earned 87 out of 100 points, school progress, 91 out of 100, and closing the gaps, 93 out of 100. The state is only using two, the highest two, which are the school progress and the closing the gaps, to determine our A rating. And noted also is our distinction in post-secondary readiness. Here's our distinction designation history. We earned 23 more than the year before, so this year our campuses brought in 156 distinctions. Last year it was 134. We're at 157 because now we're counting our district's distinction. Important to note that our elementary schools brought in over 20 distinctions, more than the year before. When we look at how we scored in all grades and all subjects, we look at the percent of students that meet three of the performance levels that we have. The performance levels are based on grade level and content assessed. And when we look at approaches, we're looking at the percent of students that are passing the state level. When we look at meets, we're looking at the percent of students that are answering approximately 61 to 78% of the test correctly. And when we look at masters, we're looking at the percent of students answering approximately 85% of the test correctly. So here we have the state, the region, and our district. And you can see that all, in all three levels of approaches, meets and masters, United ISD is scoring higher than the state and higher than the region. When we break it down by content areas, we look at reading and you, UISD is higher than the state at the passing rate, which is approaches. We're only one point behind in the meets area and two points behind in the masters. Very significant, giving the differences between our demographics and the states. And then when we look at all of the other content areas, math, writing, science and social studies, we can see that United ISD is scoring higher than the region and higher than the state in all content areas at all performance levels. And I think that we owe that to the ladies and gentlemen sitting here representing our As we continue and move forward, we are also looking at school progress. And when we look at those percentages or those scores, we can also see that in both subjects of reading and math, and we are scoring higher than the state. In the area of reading, we are exactly the same as the state and exactly the same as the region. And then in the area of math, we're surpassing the state by seven points. That means our students are progressing from one year to the next, either maintaining or progressing. When we look at the students that last year were not proficient on the STAR or EOC assessments, I'm sorry, just STAR, it's grades four through eight, we look at the percent of students that we recovered in 2018, and for reading, we recovered 44% of the students that previously had not passed. And in math, we recovered 64% of the students that previously had not passed. Again, all of those numbers are greater than the state and the region. When we look at the student success initiative for grades five and eight, we look at first and second administration. And again, in reading, we are at 86%, math 96%, both higher than the state. In eighth grade reading, at 87% and in eighth grade math, at 94%. Again, higher than the state and higher than the region. When we look at our programs under bilingual and ESL, English as a Second Language, we're not higher than the state and the region in some of the areas, but we are very comparable, trailing them by just a few percentage points. It's important to note though, that in the English as a Second Language pull-up program, at the meets and masters, I'm sorry, at the approaches, we are higher than the state and only one point away from the state at meets and masters. Again, this is based on grade level and content area. Looking at our participation, all of this data is based on 100% of our eligible students' testing, so no students are left out. We test everybody. When we look at the attendance and dropout rates for our district, in 2016-17, it's always a year behind, we are at 96% attendance, again attributed to our student support department and our campuses, higher than the state and higher than the region. And where we want to be lower is in the dropout rate. And we are lower than the state in the seventh through eighth dropout rate, and we are also lower than the state in the ninth through 12th rate. Again, attributed to our counselors and our administrators at our middle and high schools. Looking at our graduation rates, the state's graduation rate is at an 89.7% and United ISD's is at a 94.7%. Amazing work done at our secondary high schools. When we look at the types of diploma that they earn, those 94.7% of students that graduated, 90.5 of them earned either a recognized or distinguished diploma. So again, attributed to the great work that's done at our high schools. There's other post-secondary information that's reported on our TAPAR, and it looks at the new accountability areas. There's an area that's called college, career and military-ready graduates, and they're looking at the class of 2017. In the state, 54.2% of the students met this indicator, and at UISD, 66.2%, again higher than the state. When we look at advanced placement results, students meeting or exceeding the criteria at United ISD, we had 54.2% of the students that took those assessments. At the state, it was 49.1%. When we look at advanced dual credit course completion, this means that our students are earning high school credits and earning college hours. At United ISD for the class of 2017, we had 47% of our students earning that. At the state, it was 37.1%. So again, we're giving very good opportunities to our students to earn those college hours. Another important thing to note is once our students graduate, for example, for the class of 2016, 67.2% of them attended a college or a university here in Texas. The other percent, we're pretty sure are attending out-of-state universities, but that number is very high, higher than the state. The state is at only a 51.8. Now, there are some areas that we continue to work on, and that is on our SAT and SAT results. Looking at the average score at United ISD for the class of 2017, we have a 958 and the state is at a 1,019. When we look at the ACT score from the class of 2017, the average was 17.6 and at the state, it was a 20.3. So we continue to work with that to make sure that our students are doing better. With all of these great things happening at UISD, it's no wonder that we have earned our accreditation status. So the one that we have right now at TEA does say that we are accredited and we are pending the 2018-19 status that will be released in a couple of weeks on February the 1st. Our campus performance objectives. Every campus develops and implements a campus improvement plan and it is required by law. In this campus improvement plan, we have performance objectives based on the data analysis and the needs assessments that happen at every campus, and each campus periodically measures their progress. These performance objectives are approved by the board and they are posted on the district's website. We don't have them here in our presentation, but they will be in the manual that we're going to provide every campus. Looking at the student information, which we already have seen highlights in our demographic report, again, we educate 98.8 Hispanics, 75.4 economically disadvantaged, 36.1 English language learners, and a 59.3% of at-risk. So you could clearly see where we're getting our numbers for the table and our comparisons. Very important to note, oh, I think, my clicker is working faster than I am. Okay, very important to note that in our data, out of the 43,000-plus students, we only had under-reported students' data for 38 students, which is at a .2%, which is very comparable to the state. So we're doing well there. That means we're reporting all of our data the way that the state expects us to. And now, Mr. David Garcia is going to go over staff information.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Garcia. I represent the Human Resources Department. I'm the Associate Superintendent for Human Resources. It is my pleasure to bring this staff information to you this evening, Mr. Ramirez, Mr. Santos, ladies and gentlemen. The staff report at the first indicator of total staff, 6,204, however, when we include our substitute staff, it goes a little over 7,000. So even though they're part-timers, they're still considered educators in our system. And together with the teacher support staff and of course auxiliary personnel, transportation, cafeteria and other departments contribute to the numbers and results that were presented earlier by Ms. Lesa. So hats off to all of you who contribute to the results presented to you and also led, that also led to our A rating in the school district. Couple of other important information or details. Classroom teachers, 3,266, which is about 52.6% of our staff are professional support, 2,548.7, which is about 41% of our staff. A couple of other important details to cover. Librarians, 45. School counselors that play a vital role in the school district, 105. Auxiliary staff, 2,218.2, which represents about 35.8%. Total minorities, as a result of the earlier number, 6,204, 6,070.6 are considered minority employees, which is about 97.8%. When we look at ethnicity and sex, or sex of employees, we have 2,436.7 Hispanic employees, which is about 95.6% of our population. Whites is 83, 83, in total, 3.3%. When we look at gender, the majority of our employees are of the feminine gender. Males are 581, 22.8%, and 1,967.7 are female. This particular profession is a profession driven by choices of individuals, not necessarily that because you're a female, you become a teacher. It is a matter of choice by individuals and professional intent of individuals. So that, with that said, it gives us an indication of the choices people make who want to have impact with regards to student education. In our next slide, it gives us information regarding degree status. We have 24.7 educators that are non-degreed. These are individuals that help us in the area of career and technologies such as welders, plumbers, carpenters and so forth. Also, we have the program called District of Innovation that also assists us to secure persons with the different skills in order to educate our children in the skilled areas of the school district. 1,989 have, of our, 78% of our population have a bachelor's degree. 20.6% of our teacher population are 524.9 in numbers of our teachers have a master's degree. 10 individuals have a doctor's degree or .4%. When it comes to years of experience, beginning teachers, 76.43%, 1 to 5 years of experience, 450.9, 6 to 10 years of experience, 474, 10 to 20 years, 1,077.7 or 43%, and over 20 years, 469.3 or 18.4. The teacher-student ratio is 17.0%, and this is an indication that the, that the school district does retain its experienced educators, which simply means that it is a tribute to the supervision by campus administrators, the oversight by central office instruction, as well as direction from the superintendent through the Board of Trustees. Lastly, experience of campus leadership. Our average principals have eight years of experience, 7.9 with the district. Assistant principals, 8.8, and of course, eight, I'm sorry, I didn't forward the slide. There we go. Thank you. All right. Our assistant principals have 8.7 years of experience. Point to make that the district hires from within and simply the district strongly feels that we have a sufficient professional pool to draw from, to cover all the different ranks and areas of interest, not necessarily interest, but areas of instruction and administration in order to meet the needs of educating our children and being responsible to our community in doing the best job possible to educate all our children that attend our schools. Years of experience, our teachers, 13.2%, I'm sorry, 13.2. The average years of experience with the district is 11.4, which is indicative of retaining our teachers. Average year salary of teachers, beginning teachers, 48,680, 1 to 5 years, 51,467, 6 to 10 years, 54,34, I'm sorry, 54,034, 11 to 20 years, 56,00938, and over 20 years, 63,874. If you look at the right-hand side of the state pay averages, the district exceeds that and it is reflective of the Board of Trustees' vision through the superintendent and the rest of the administration to compensate individuals for services rendered to do the best job possible in educating our children. Average accrual salaries of teachers is 56,459, and then of course respectively for support staff, 68,356. For campus administration, 79,0574 compared to the state's 77,712. When we look at central office average pay, we'll look at 90,000 for the school district compared to the state's 102,000. So this is an area where the school district does not fall short, but very simply deems it appropriate to calculate salaries and pay the, pay the salaries in order to remain competitive in the market or the workforce. An important key point to, to point out, our turnover rate is 6.8% compared to the state's 16.6%. What the district is simply doing, one, it recruits, it recruits, employs and retains high-quality personnel. It compensates, it provides the different benefits in order for individuals to be successful and meet the personal needs that they have outside of the workplace, but at the same time reflective of what the Board of Trustees' envisions for us through our superintendent of schools. So this is the, the staff information that supports the academic outcomes that were presented earlier to you through Ms. Lesa. And that concludes the Human Resources part. Thank you.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Laida Benavides and I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business. Just to share some financial information, this financial information, even though it's in the 17-18 Annual Report, it's actually 16-17 data. So pretty much our membership back then was 43,558. So every time you see on a per student, that's what they're calculating it on. And I really just want to have your, I know there's a lot of numbers here and only people like me get excited about this, but I want you to focus on the all funds because that's the apples-to-apples with the state. So it's a good, excuse me, it's a good barometer of how we're doing. If you can see right there, per student, we spent 9,800, or we have revenue of 9,863 per student, while at the state level or state average, it's 11,247. So that's telling me we're, we have less revenue per student than other school districts in our state. Some less, some more, but you know, we're doing a lot with what we have. The local tax, 3,937 per student, at the state level, 5,200. So if your compadres complaining about our tax revenue and our tax rate, you can share this with them. And then state money, we get 4,401 per student. State average is 4,390, which kind of makes sense that they try to even it out throughout the state. And we do get federal monies, 1,332 per student because of the type of student demographics we have with the, with the high ELs and the high economically disadvantaged. On the fund balance, it is key. On the general fund, we have $82.8 million unassigned of 67.2. That is the money that has not been assigned for anything in particular. It's kind of like our savings account. And you can compare it to the way the state has it as well, at the state level. Expenditures, again, I'm going to focus on the all funds. We spend 12,393, and when I was looking at this, I was like, wow. But at the same time, if you look at capital outlay, that is our bond program. The 104 million dollars of expenditures is pretty much what we have been spending with our new schools, the renovations. And so if you break it down, we are pretty much, I think, in line with the, with the state with 12,393 per student and at the state level, 12,787. And as you go down the line with the all funds, in instruction, we spend 5,076 per student, at the state level, 5,338, and then so on. Resource media are our librarians. Staff development, instructional leadership is the leadership at your campuses. School leadership is, I'm sorry, instructional leadership are the CNI individuals. Your school leadership are principals, APs, and those types of individuals. Guidance and counseling, that also includes your diagnosticians and a lot of special ed staff as well as your counselors, social work services, you know, as well. And then your health services, of course, are your nurses. And if you look at those, we tend to be higher than the state because when we were facing budget cuts, what we found out were that a lot of school districts do not have a registered nurse at every campus or do not have a full-time librarian at every campus. So these were the things that I think our board and our superintendent really felt they needed to support to keep our, our schools going in the right direction. And so if you just look at the bottom line, we spend in our expenditures, on average, all funds, 12,600, 12,393 and at the state, 12,787. And then again, expenditures per program, our regular program, at 106.4 million, 59% of what we spent, look at the state at 60%. Gifted and talented, I know I'm going to hear about this, but .25% at the state, 1.07%. Career and tech, we really do push a lot on career and tech and it shows in the results from the state. We spend 4.61% of our budget at the state level, they're a little lower than us at 3.95. Students with disabilities, this is our special ed, we spend 15.37% of our budget. We are in line with the state at 15.57. And then on accelerated education, 3.34, a little less than the state at 4.43. And bilingual, 1.84% and the state is at 1.75. So this is kind of a way to, to measure our, our spending practices in line with the state and sure enough, you can tell that it kind of is. Just again, athletics, if people complain about our athletics and extracurricular, you can share with them that we're lower than the state. 2.35%, $160 per student. At the state level, it's $190 per student. So we are lower than the state. We try to be very conservative. The instructional expenditure ratio, 61.5, we're a little less than the state at 63.1. And then finally, our tax rate, our total tax rate was $1.2249. You'll see the comparison to the state and again, share this with your compadres that we are lower than the state at a $1.297. We try to be very conservative. Most of the cents have come because of the debt service that we're building those new schools. Our property values are at 16.5 billion. They're kind of broken down into three main categories, which is business, residential and oil and gas. And then our general fund unassigned balance, I mentioned before, we're at 67.2%, I mean, I'm sorry, 67.2 million. point two percent, I mean, I'm sorry, sixty-seven point two million. And then our budgeted expenditures, we're at three hundred and sixty-five million, and then the calculation shows that our fund balance can take care of about eighteen point four percent of our budget at this time. So again, I'd like to thank you and congratulate everybody here for their hard work, and we hope to continue to support at the level that we've been supporting. Thank you.
Ms. Benavides, you really know your numbers, right?
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Mrs. Oliveros, Mr. Santos, United ISD staff, and our community. First of all, congratulations on such accomplishments that have been achieved working together. And I'd like to share with you our data with regards to the violent and criminal incidents. During the seventeen eighteen school year, we had sixty-eight incidents classified as assaults, and we had two incidents classified as aggravated assaults. That's a total of seventy for the school year, with our enrollment in May of 2018 being forty-two thousand nine hundred and seven. We see a slight decrease. However, I would like for Dr. Alicia Carrillo to share with members of our community, as well as United ISD, all the initiatives we have at UISD that are helping us ensure that we have safe, secure campuses, and of course, all the efforts that we all put forth to ensure we reach our goals.
Good evening again. I'm going to present on behalf of Dr. Carrillo. At United Independent School District, our staff works toward achieving district goal two, a safer nurturing environment, by following a comprehensive cohesive district-wide, safe, and healthy students program. This program has demonstrated success in keeping students and campuses safe. UISD has adopted policies and procedures for addressing student use of drugs, alcohol, tobacco, and student violence. These policies and procedures have been shared with parents, teachers, and students, and are available to the public on our district website. Students and parents receive access to electronic copies of the Student Code of Conduct, the Bus Rider Handbook, and Technology Use Handbook, that detail all the laws, policies, and rules, and consequences. Administrators document student violations that involve violence, drug, alcohol, and tobacco use. This is really required by our, because we get funding from the state, I mean, from the federal government under the Title IV Part VIII Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grants. Thank you. I have one more. Okay. All district employees receive access, oh, now we talk about the employees. All district employees receive access to electronic copies of the United ISD Employee Handbook, which includes a copy of the Standards of Conduct, DH Local, Code of Ethics and Standard Practices for Texas Educators, DHE, the Safe and Drug-Free Schools Drug Abuse Prevention Requirements, DHDI Tobacco Use, DHGKA FNCD, and Searches and Alcohol and Drug Testing Policies, DHE. Coordination and collaboration with community members, law enforcement officers, other organizations, and service agencies have been encouraged through the many UISD programs that support district goal two, to ensure a safe, nurturing, positive, and secure learning environment for all students and staff.
Focusing on our post-secondary information. Section thirty-nine point three oh six requires each district to publish as part of its annual report, a report on the student performance in post-secondary institutions during their first year of enrollment. The data is compiled by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, and the most current data that we have is for the class of 2016. On this report, what they do is they calculate their GPAs for the fall of 2016, the spring of 2017, and the summer of 2017. And they provide the data for the students that are enrolled in the public, the higher institution, institutes in Texas. There is a total of, there was a total of two thousand nine hundred and twelve graduates. Of those, eight hundred and forty attended a four-year university, and one thousand one hundred and sixty-four attended a two-year university. And then what they do is they provide the number of students that have a GPA lower than a two-point-oh, between a two-point-oh and a two-point-four-nine, two-point-five-two-nine-nine, three-point-oh and above, two-three-four-nine, and above a three-point-five. All in all, we, after doing the math, we see that seventy-eight percent of the students earned a GPA above a two-point-oh, which is considered a C, at the two- and four-year public education colleges, I'm sorry, and universities that they attended. So our students are doing well. The last part of a report includes the glossary, which we have in all of our books, the ones that you'll be receiving soon, and the Spanish translation for the tab bar glossary is scheduled to be released at the end of this month by the state. There's resources and availability of the report. This report will be posted in our district's website within two weeks after this meeting. Paper copies will also be available at the district central office and on each campus in the district. And of course, any questions that you may have, you can contact myself at five-two-four-five, and my email is ileza@uisd.net. And then I hand it over to Mr. Gonzalez.
Oliveros, Mr. Ramirez, Santos, members of the audience, it is a great pleasure to announce that at UISD, we are an A district, because we do things in a A manner. I would special thanks to our A-rated stakeholders for the support and service provided to our district and UISD students. This time, I ask our principals to stand, and be recognized for all the work they do, And again, on behalf of our Santos and our Board of Trustees, everybody in this audience today, which are all our departments, our coordinators who join us in curriculum instruction, our executive directors, for the work you do every single day. And again,
Gonzalez, if you can get the rest of our employees to stand up and also be recognized.
Yes, all our departments.
All the employees.
The rest of the employees, please stand up, to be recognized. Thank you. Our tab bar booklets for our campus and coordinators, we're going to send them through email to you tomorrow. And at this time, I want to pass over Ms. Angie Sanchez for the closing of DIC meeting for this evening. And again, thank you for your attendance. Ms. Sanchez.
It is now five thirty-six. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mr. Perez, do I have a second? Ms. Miller? All in favor, please raise your hands. Motion passes. The DIC meeting is now adjourned. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.